Y'all cleaned up really well.
Feel this room, that's great.
Y'all, we dressed up tonight. We usually don't wear coats, but Ross wears one every, every week. But we dressed up for Sherri tonight. We usually dress casually most of the time. But this is special night. Appreciate y'all coming.
Scott still got his flip flops on like he wants to be. We've had about two-thirds of our air conditioners messed up today. We've been sweating. At least this one works. I can turn it down just a little bit. Thank you. Good to see you. I'm sure that ain't been awhile. Y'all get to see me try out my new bifocals tonight. I picked them up at the doctor's office this morning. It's the first one since thirteen years ago, so I may not can read this agenda tonight, but we'll, we'll see how it goes. Maybe it'll be just fine. Proud to see everybody with us tonight. We're gonna have our swearing in ceremony for Sherri here in just a minute, and then we'll get the meeting started and take care of our business tonight. And we have a sizable agenda tonight. I think maybe sixteen items that we'll cover. Seventeen. We're real proud that Sherri joined us. She's gonna be a fine addition to our council, and we're most happy that she'll be officially a counselor as of tonight. And we know that her abilities are unlimited. She's done a magnificent job in education for... We usually start with an invocation and a pledge. So we'll make sure that you feel welcome here tonight, everyone, whether you're here for business or just to see Sherri, help me swear in and support her. We're happy that each of you come, as well as our press. It's always faithful to come out and join us. We're gonna go ahead and have our invocation and our pledge, and then we'll get right into the swearing ceremony. Father of heaven, we pause to thank you for this day. Or we thank you for the many blessings to give to us each day. And we thank you that you have a head to protection around this community, Lord. We know you do. You see each one in our daily lives, and you know us, or you know what we stand for. And may we always be of yourself, Lord, and do the things that's well and pleasing in your sight. Be with us here in this meeting tonight, and may come to the business of the city in a lordly fashion, with the head compliant with all the laws of Alabama, and the essence should be with the leaders of our nation tonight. As heaven has said, it has to be made in our nation, whether it be about our economy, our safety, our drug prices, our borders, whatever, Lord, is pending, Lord, yours to live to prove. And we understand that. Or to pray all these things that are mentioned in your name, Christ has. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sherri, just, we're gonna, we're gonna, Sherri, it's your time, but it's time to sit here and another. So, if I want to preside over the swearing in ceremonies?
If you're on time, you're late, man. First of all, Mayor, council members, apologize for being late. We had a case that ran late this afternoon, and we had some, Jeremy knows, some testing issues going on. I had to wait on it.
Realize you have a schedule.
And I've gotta wait on it.
No apologies, leaving. No apologies, leaving. You go, you carry on.
But I do wanna say that it's my honor and privilege to be doing this. Dr. Armstrong and I go back a long way, and she brings a lot of knowledge to the table, and with different walks of people from different walks of life, I think she's gonna do an excellent job, and I congratulate her. And she's got a fine family. A bunch of words right here. It's a pretty good afternoon. I Sherri Armstrong.
And Sherri Armstrong.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
The duties of the office upon which I am about to enter.
The duties of the office about which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Sherri, while you're on the seat, we'd like to say thank the audience. You go right ahead.
Well, I'm excited, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve our people and our city. I don't know how to thank you all, and I will try my best to do the best I can for our town.
Okay, with the ceremony is now complete, we'll enter into our actual council meeting. Anyone wishing to stay, you're most welcomed. If you have another schedule you need to keep, if you don't have other business, you're bound to go. We'll leave it in your hands. Item one on our schedule tonight, our agenda, is going to be a recommendation to approve the minutes of the July seventeenth council meeting. Do we have a motion to do that? We got a motion from Ross, and we hit a second. Second from Scott. All those in favor of approving our minutes? Thank you. Unanimous. Item two is a recommendation to approve our accounts payable bills for July 2023. Do we also need a motion for that? A motion from Scott? No, I'll say, second. A second from Ross. Are those in favor of paying our bills that are due? Thank you. Item three is a recommendation to appoint Jeremy Streetman as the attorney for the city of Hamilton, and would like to have a motion on that. Got a motion? A second from Scott. All those in favor? Jeremy's salary's not mentioned on those minutes, but we'll have him on retainer as we did Scott Hunt, and then we'll pay him by the hour for the duties we call on him to do. So Jeremy, is that agreeable to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Item four is a recommendation to appoint Hunter Cox to the zoning board, and he'll be replacing Jeremy Streetman. Hunter would be good to serve if he wasn't an attorney, but he'll also be there to give us some advice should a matter of legality come up in the zoning meeting. So I'd like to afford him tonight to be our replacement of Jeremy. Should there, Jeremy probably wouldn't have a public serving, but he wanted to recuse himself from that because he's the city's attorney. He didn't want to serve on that board also. So some sensitive things come up on zoning sometimes. He just felt more comfortable to come off that board. Got a motion from Scott Robinson? Yeah, a second. Sherri, a second. All in favor of appointing Hunter? Thank you. Unanimous, appreciate it. Item five is a recommendation to appoint Tracy Lee to the street. Item five is a recommendation to run Tracy Lee to the street department supervisory position. Um, we've just lost our street super to retirement, and, uh, he recommended Tracy. As a matter of fact, Mr. Walker said he would think, Kevin told me, he thought Tracy has the experience and knowledge to carry on well, and, uh, he wanted him replaced himself. So, on that recommendation, I'd like to make that promotion.
I'll see.
Got a motion?
I'll see.
A second from Wade. All those in favor of that? We'll make a recommendation to increase Tracy Lee's pay at twenty-one, twenty-one per hour for this promotion. After a six-month period, we've what we call an introductory to this job, and we'll review Tracy and see if he's doing all the things that are required in that position, and then maybe it's made an adjustment up to that salary currently. Uh, they'll be working for us at twenty-one, twenty-one per hour, and then we'll review it in six months.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Scott Tarrow. We need a second?
Second.
That's a second from Scott. All those in favor of that? Thank you, unanimous. Uh, also, a recommendation to promote Greg Harris. He's been with us a long time, the assistant foreman, uh, for the Hamilton Street Department. He'd be second under Tracy, and I recommend that we increase Greg Harris's. Uh, let's do the vote first.
I'll make it.
We got a vote, uh, we got a, uh, motion, we need a second? Second from Sherry. All those in favor of that promotion? Thank you. And then, I'm also recommending Greg Harris's pay be adjusted by one dollar per hour to nineteen dollars and eighteen cents per hour on this promotion.
I see.
Got a motion from Ross? We need a second?
I'll see.
Second from Scott Tarrow. All those in favor? Thank you. And we'd like to announce that, uh, Trey Massey and Tyler Calvert will be hired as patrolmen recruits for the Hamilton Police Department. Both will be required to attend and graduate the police academy to achieve ATO's law enforcement, uh, certification. Uh, upon announcing those hearings, we'd also like to, uh, recommend that, uh, Trey and Tyler have entry pay of seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents per hour for their position as patrol recruits for the Hamilton Police Department. With a motion to pay them. Got a motion from Sherry?
I'll see.
A second from Scott Robertson. All those in favor?
So, do you have any comments on they might start school or anything?
We, uh, we've had to make a couple trips to Montgomery to make sure the paperwork's squared away, uh, so I can't, can't really say for sure when they'll start the academy. Um, Mr. Calvert will start work at eight AM in the morning, and, uh, Mr. Massey will start at fourteen today beginning. So, we'll make sure we'll see some home shine, books, and fresh uniforms. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, item eleven, a recommendation to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash eight dash seven, the City of Hamilton's annual transport transportation plan to spend projected funds of sixty thousand collected from the rebuild Alabama gas tax for fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-three slash twenty twenty-four for the continued improvements of various streets throughout the city by striping and paving new streets. These funds are accumulated from the collective additional excise attacks on gasoline and diesel fuel, uh, that the Alabama legislature passed in two thousand nineteen. And we do have to commit what we're gonna do with these dollars, so this is our plan that we're introducing tonight for to spend those dollars. And we need a motion to approve the spending of this money?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Ross? We need a second?
I'll see.
A second. All those in favor? Thank you. Um, item twelve has to do with our Hamilton Library. Uh, I'd like to recommend that we convert sixty-five lights at the Hamilton Library to LED lighting for the cost of thirty-two hundred dollars. Not thirty-two thousand, that's thirty-two hundred. It's an extra zero in there.
Yeah, I know.
The dot was in the right place, we just needed, uh, remove one zero. Thirty-two hundred, about half of those lights, uh, not half, but about a third of those lights are on the link right now. The balance too bad, and I talked to Mike about it, and he had done some research on it. And we feel that it would be best to go LED instead of to replace all those old ballots and, uh, try to repair what's there. So, I'm recommending that we relight the library.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion. Scott Tarrow, we need a second?
Second.
A second from Wade. All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. That's good. Thirteen is, uh, this has kinda been up in the air in the last thirty minutes, but I'm gonna put this out there and let y'all discuss it. We put a, uh, AC unit that's on the link out for bids, and we had two bids turned in. There's a big discrepancy between the amount of those bids. I won't give those publicly, but there's a good bit of money difference. And, uh, we called them to bid a four-gun unit that's actually a household unit instead of commercial. Uh, we want ream or something compatible ream. And the two guys that did had a big difference of opinion. So, we're about to award this to the low bidder unless y'all think we should do something different. We really need this unit in, it's just hot building in some places. But we still got the repairs ahead of us for, for our AC units and ductwork. Some other units are need to be checked out, and some ductwork that's not functioning right, so.
The only question I have is, we left these other units out. I'm not just gonna, well, everything to be fixed and fix that ductwork. We got others, and this, that's the only question I have. Which, uh, unit is this, Mayor?
This is one.
Is this room here or?
No, it's the one that does the.
Downstairs?
The one that took the bids on is the one downstairs by Crystal, where her base gives the return of her staff.
So, even after this, we got more to work on.
Oh, yeah, we definitely need to come back with the next meeting and put it all out for consolidation. I really think it's hard as, stuck as to get these days. We need to go ahead and trade with this man on these bids and still.
Beat out the rest of it.
Yeah, still beat out the rest of the work that's need to be done and, uh, get it all corrected to where it's correct once and for all. We better, when they've added on to this building, instead of going with commercial units, they put thirteen household units in this building, and it's just, we could go to like it's a conglomerate that turned into a nightmare. And it's not been very good since we've been here. And I think we're gonna have to right the problem. They will make it efficient and make it right. We've got at least three units not working properly right now, but this one's completely out. It's actually got some parts missing off of it, so we'll have to commission.
So, you recommend going ahead and.
I recommend that we award this bid the next meeting in Cleveland, who's the low bid of sixty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that'll be an outside unit and an air handler. We should have to replace and, and go in our basement and take it up in a hollow and under the building to get it in there, and it's gonna be a little further. But at any rate, it was much lower than the other bidder.
I'll, I'll, um, make a motion to do that based on, make sure it's, what he's, be his choice.
These hot days aren't going anywhere real soon, but we did, we did let one in and go it, and we can get it going.
I'll make a motion.
So, I didn't really want to table this one.
I'll see.
Got a second from Ross. Those in favor of getting this one unit repaired and then looking back at our next meeting, maybe, and getting the whole thing looked up? Thank you for letting us do that. Oh, that's our next item, maybe, uh, we're, this is, in this, in this agenda, I have to obviously get in there, it's really something, thank you. This is a recommendation, uh, put out everything that needs to be repaired or replaced out to bids, uh, before our city hall. And this is, aside from this one unit we're gonna replace, uh, we've got other repairs, numerous other repairs that need to be done.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we got a motion?
A second.
Got a second. Our other Scott over here. Those in favor of putting it all out to bids and getting it corrected? Thank you. Appreciate both those motions. Cause we do need to get this lobby downstairs cooled immediately if we can. Okay, um, we had talked about putting some of our money on certificate deposit, and we put it out to bids, and, um, I'm recommending that we accept the highest bid from People's Trust Bank of four point three two, uh, for six months, two million dollar certificate deposit. And that's the best bid we got from the three banks that bid.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Scott Tarrow? Need a second? Sherry, a second. Thank you. All those in favor of buying a certificate for six months, four thirty-two? Thank you. Um, item sixteen is something that I haven't talked to you guys individually about, but our contract with Nava Retail, uh, has, uh, almost expired. It's coming up right away for renewal, and the cost of this per year is thirty thousand. Um, gonna make this a recommendation, and I'll let you decide whether or not you wanna vote for or against a renewal.
I'd be willing to go one more year, but we all see it last this year now. I probably would not be willing to go next year. I think according to what they tell us, they don't bring a few things, we heard at the core. I really believe that they do have some things working that can hopefully make it work for a while, one more time. We've had that conversation, but it's a critical year, you have to, Scott.
Oh, yeah. It's a, it's a very critical year for them. They have to preuse that for this year. Or they know, they know that we're not, or they're starting to see it. They have a lot of things for them.
They, I'd be willing to make that motion.
We got a motion from Wade to go another year with Nava Retail with the things they've told us they have working for us, and, uh, I believe some of this is true. I had a pretty long conversation. My phone rang, and it's Los Angeles, California. I never answered that call, but in this case I did, and it was representative from Nava Retail. You tell me what all they're working on, and that voice sounds really good. And, uh, with that said, we'll need a second to vote on this?
I'll see.
Got a second from Scott Robertson? All those in favor of another year with Nava Retail? Thank you. That's unanimous. I appreciate that. Um, Tom Weismuller is on our agenda tonight. Tom, are you in the audience? Well, see, Tom. He asked to be added, but I don't think he was able to make it after all. So, uh, I believe we're going to have an item that came up this afternoon. Our chief had, uh, some information to me, and we may wanna hear from him and possibly amend this agenda tonight after hearing from our chief. Tell us what's on your mind.
So, uh, we've had a, we've had a couple of police vehicles ordered for several months, and our previous chief ordered these two police tacos. Um, and if you know anything about our economy, it's, um, definitely hard to get anything this late in time. Um, passes around, I'm pretty sure they're identical. That's the Bill sale, and, um, pretty much nine miles invoice on the two police pursuit deals. Um, these per unit are thirty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, these have been ordered for some time. We got a phone call today, actually, we called to check on them, and they said one of them's being washed, and the other one is, uh, washed and ready to go. Uh, we, they called us back. We opted to, um, have these vehicles delivered at this approval from the city council, have these two vehicles delivered to, um, the equipment upfitter, and that'd be another twenty thousand dollars to outfit two police vehicles with the emergency equipment, sirens, lights, the, uh, prisoner cage, transport area, all that stuff, push bumpers, hit bars, all that stuff. Um, so I'm, I'm just looking for a recommendation or y'all's approval to go ahead and purchase these two vehicles based on the fact that previous chief has been trying to order two a year and have these units, uh, these older units replaced. If we were to get back to full staff, which I hope we do, we'd only have one extra police vehicle in the event that anybody's vehicle goes down. And, uh, I've, I've seen it since I've been chief, two or three patrol vehicles go down at one time. Uh, we've got fifteen models on the road, uh, and we definitely don't wanna be in a situation where we're having hot seat these vehicles and running, you know, enough as it is for a shift, much less twenty-four hours a day we don't look back. Uh, that would make, that would make, uh, vehicle maintenance go through the roof. So, I, my recommendation is go ahead and take possession of these two vehicles from Doc Who, Chevrolet, and have those delivered, um, to that supply of equipment installed.
You check your budgets. Is it really a budget to get that equipment?
It, it was, it was in my budget, but the, uh, but we had an unforeseen issue with, um, our equipment purchase, the two police officer bills that we, uh, received from the county department and the town, uh, view on, on that. So, that took a substantial amount out of my budget. Uh, but needless to say, this was, this has been ordered for some time, and, uh, this was budgeted for in the previous budget.
What's the, uh, item?
Uh, we've got at least one, and we've got one two thousand fifteen that's still on the road, uh, so it would go to a backup vehicle, and, uh, I think the other one's a, is a sixteen model, uh, and it's got some equipment issues in it as well. So, we would probably end up deadline, and that'd be.
Anything more to say?
Uh, we do have two vehicles, Lieutenant Chandler and I was talking about that today that we hope will go there soon. One of them's, uh, one of the last chargers we've got that's, uh, inoperable, and the other one is a expedition.
We won't mention this one right three times.
That's it. That's one of those inherited things.
Anyway, uh, if we do this tonight, we're gonna need to amend our agenda. It was not on the agenda, but this came up today after the agenda was printed.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to vote on the two vehicles.
Uh, motion to make amendment to our agenda tonight?
I'll see.
Got a second? All those in favor of amending? Thank you. I'd make the recommendation, as hard as these are going to get, that we, uh, go ahead and take delivery on these two, um, twenty-three models, uh, the twenty-threes? Okay, uh, work cars for our strumming, and maybe take that fifteen and make it a backup and, um, I guess keep the sixteen too for right now.
Yes, sir.
Um, do I have a motion or a second to purchase these?
I'll make a motion. Do we have a total though, on what, what total cost we did?
Not divided up the map on the outfit delivery and per unit. Uh, it's thirty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-four per unit. And then the delivery of both of those units are three hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy cents. And the outfit cost is twenty thousand nine hundred thirty-three.
Is that for her or you?
No, that's for both of them. That's for both of them. That's, that's around ten thousand.
Try not to carry your mic with my earrings.
Please, no, please. My budget would really be. That looks, that looks right. I did, I did have a chief's conference, and Chevrolet did share, give us feel, and said, you know, if you're even looking at possibly ordering twenty-four models, you're late on putting in your order because I mean, they're so hard to get, so. You know, that's an option too, that's on the right, look at some of your budgeting.
Chief, is everybody using Tahos?
Yes, sir, everyone's in Tahos, well, everyone is in a shitty legal amount. We don't have, we don't have any Dodge or anything like that on the front. I said Lieutenant Chandler's will pick it up, and everyone else is in Tahos. You know, if we, if we look at adding to the police force, you know, then we're really going to be in a bad shape for a period. Like I said, if we get back to full staff, we're going to have one host court right now if we don't get it.
About ninety-one thousand equipped and delivered is what we're voting on tonight, so. We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor of taking delivery on these cars and equipping them? Thank you.
How long's take it?
Once you go, we've had, we've had the equipment ordered since probably June, and he told me he's probably got half of it, none of the brush cars, none of the.
Once you get the vehicle on, it'll take a week or two to put all the equipment in.
I can't say, I'm guessing that it will probably be November, obviously, before we take possession of it. By the time all the equipment comes in for the outfit and equipment and stuff, so. Probably, I'm not counting next, hopefully, November.
So basically, we'll probably pay for these two vehicles in this budget, and the equipment will probably pay for in the new budget.
It did very well, that did very well.
I would think so, okay. Anyway, we'll come up to that. Is there further business tonight? Rob, you got some business for us tonight?
No, sure.
Okay. Just saw you holding a folder, I said it may have something for us?
Well, I do have some property that I'm trying to develop, residential development, or multifamily, single family development. And I would like for the council to consider it future time, I'll provide the information if you'd like that information.
Well, we've got a sewer line that runs the road down there on the main road, and we've got water for you. We just need to see the plan so we can approve the plan.
That's what I'm working on.
There's hardly anybody on that sewer line that runs down through there, so we could put a lot of houses on that, on that sewer. It's a six-inch vein, and it'll take care of a lot.
That would be great.
Gravity flow, we could put you in business pretty quick, I think.
The investors that we have, that are interested in the property have a lot of.
And we are indeed a sneh housing.
Rob, our project plan.
Yeah.
And we need it on that side of town, especially with the new university and students moving in, and this is not a good place to do it.
We'd entertain seeing that plan at any time, so just whenever it's, whenever it's available, get it into us some way, and we'll review it, try to get some approvals on it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further business?
I just want to say, just want to wish all of our students a great school year, the teacher, administrators, and to our police, it's going to help make sure we get everybody to safe in the right places, be patient. We need to, not be a madhouse, but that's part of the first day of school, but just glad to see school.
I will, I will say that Lieutenant Chandler and I were talking today, and we're going to try to allocate some resources to make sure we address some speeding complaints in front of the school, in front of all the schools, but along Steel Street and different things like that. So not only the adults, but to your kids too, to drive safely and slow down, because we're going to be in a forceless traffic loss.
Thank you. I'd also like to add congratulations to Sharon again before we close, and you'll forward serve the next two years. We, we hope to have a lot of things accomplished in the next two years. You'll be building, you're not already, but don't hesitate to call us and tell them, Jay, whatever we know, get it anyway we can, and I'm the forward servant. Thank you, thank you for being here, we're in service.
With that said, we'll need a motion to do the turn.
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion. Do we have a second to that motion? Second by Ross, all those in favor of adjournment? Thank you.
Got a two thousand seventeen Honda Civic here we're working on, we placed a front bumper, repairing the door, repaired the quarter panel, pearl white, and we'll blend the doors and stuff on it, make it all look like new again. About a week's time on this one here. He's went, went sand the car, got a prep from Agent Perry. Got it already worked, sanded, washed, and the paint booth ready to take up, sprayed the doors, bumper, and the quarter panel. Should have sprayed Thursday night in the morning. Make a quick night together.
Local community, from a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama heating cooler, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers, and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, president and CEO of People's Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at six o'clock PM.
Get your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at two oh five four six eight four six two five.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral Home and Stry Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in two thousand and two, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there.
Since nineteen eighty-seven, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in twelve months, same as cash, so stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith's Furniture, or call us at six six two eight six two seven four one two.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.